Good evening and welcome to tonight's special school board meeting. Monday, September twenty five, two thousand twenty three. You have met compliance with official locations. Roll call, please.
Brooke Taylor.
Here.
Len Albright.
Here.
Nick Schumacher.
Here.
I'm Smith.
Here.
I'm here.
President Olson.
Here.
Tonight's agenda is school board candidate interviews. Each candidate will answer six questions. It will be given no more than fifteen minutes to complete the interview. Names of the candidates were drawn at random to determine the order in which they would be interviewed. You do have that sheet in front of you. So with that hand, will you please get our first candidate? Sorry, I'm assuming we're we're still going from seven to four candidates, even though it says nine.
We're down to seven.
Yeah, but we're still going down to four.
Still down.
Yeah. Yeah. Through the same voting procedure for.
Oh, yes.
Hello.
Seat is not too popular.
Not yet.
Good show, Laura.
Oh, yeah, yeah, thanks.
Welcome, Laura. I am Steve Olson, the school board president. As you know, today, we are interviewing for the school district's school board vacancy. Thank you for your interest in filing for the vacant seat. There are six questions selected, and every school board member will ask one question. This interview will be limited to fifteen minutes, which gives you approximately two minutes per question. You'll need to manage your answers to ensure you have enough time to get through all six questions. Superintendent Dr. Amy Starzessky will be signaling time throughout the whole process. You will get a yellow sign with thirty seconds remaining and a red sign when your time has been completed. Your time will start after I read the first questions. We will, excuse me, I'm not reading. After the first question is read, we will send out an email to all applicants tonight with the final board decision. We wish you good luck. And school board member Diana Smith will be asking the first question.
Okay. Describe your understanding of your role as a school board member and the administration's role in the district.
Sure. The first role is obviously reviewing policies, making policy decisions and recommendations to ensure that the school is statutorily complying with all federal laws. The other part is ensuring that they're fiscally responsible for the district, managing the budget, thinking long term, strategic planning for the school board is a big piece of that as well. Approving those budgets, insurance things that come forward. And then lastly, you know, supporting and listening to, not that it's in the defined role, but listening to our staff and administration and letting them do their jobs, so not micromanaging, but of course, making sure you know enough to make decisions that are really important that they're recommending to us.
Laura. What strengths do you possess to make you an effective candidate?
I'd say my number one strength is policy oriented. It's what I've done professionally. It's what I've done personally. It's the chair that I was on the committee for the school board for six years, all six years, pretty much. You know, I was able to be a delegate. That's really important to be able to read those policies. I was the delegate for the CISA. So, you know, not just looking at our school board, making policy recommendations or resolutions, but also for numerous other school districts serving on CISA twelve.
Thank you.
All right, Ty, Laura. Describe your responsibilities as a school board member if you receive an email or phone call from a parent or employee with a complaint.
Well, that is something I always really appreciated, I'll tell you, even if it was not always the nicest emails. I want to hear from people, whether it's positive or negative. And so I was someone that would say, thank you, I'll look into this. And it was always really important as well to make sure you're sending that to the appropriate people. So typically, I'd be sending that to the board president, and Amy had numerous emails from me. If I knew it was a direct person to send it to, like finance or something, you know, making sure you're routing it to the appropriate administration. But our role is never to investigate it ourselves, but I do feel it is our role to follow up. So when you get that email, you know, I would follow up with Amy or the the board president saying, did you get back to this person and what was the end resolution? And even maybe check in with that, like, did you get your answer? And if not, try a different route. An appropriate route, not like other people, but I'll follow up with that person again.
Thank you.
Good evening, Laura. You have a lot of time, so feel free to expand your answers here. If you are appointed as a new board member, what are some of the first things you would do in connection with your new?
I would like to get a full upload of what's going on with redistricting, given that's, you know, the most timely thing that the school board has facing them, and I'm appreciative that I've had as a past board member. I think that's also a huge asset that I didn't add is, you know, pre-COVID, I was a part of those conversations. I was already looking at the data. We were able to ask a lot of questions, and so that is something that's not easy. It's not something that happens frequently. And so to have a new board member that has already had some of those conversations, been a part of the presentations, met one on one with administration, I would want to be updated on that, but that's going to be really helpful to already have that foundational knowledge. So again, if there's new updates, which there probably are, you know, I would want to learn about that, the fiscal situation. I'd want to meet with a person to make sure I'm understanding where we're at and what that trajectory looks like with some of the changes that Governor Evers has put in place. And then again, just we have a strategic plan. Where are we at on that? What is the board doing to support those different strategic plans for our district? It's only been six months, but things change quickly.
Thank you.
Hi, Laura.
Hi, Len.
If you could, describe your understanding of the following statement. All means all, every student, every day.
I would say that is something that I've definitely been most passionate about on the school board. When I ran for the school board position my first time, it was because actually lots of folks in the communities of color had come to me about some concerns. I tried to advocate, reaching out to other folks of color to see if we could get more diversity on our school board. Since then, things have definitely improved. We've had hired folks that are specifically looking at not just race, but diversity, equity, and inclusion. And then additionally, that belonging aspect, which is really, really important to all students. And so when we say all means all in the school district of Superior, we're not just looking at predominant groups or folks with special talents. We are, again, really trying to remove barriers so all of our students can take AP courses. So all of our students maybe have different career avenues, even if it's not that traditional four-year college avenue. So when I think about all means all, it means having diverse voices and perspectives and actually taking action to achieve what we're saying is all means all. It can't just be words.
Your final question.
Was it? Like, two minutes. I should have looked at the time.
I said, expand. Why are you the best candidate to fill this short-term vacancy?
And this is my last question. This is good. Okay. I thought long and hard about not running the last election cycle. And I think it's important to have a step back sometimes. New perspectives are always nice. I like to have a balance on the board. But it also helps to have folks that have been on there for a while, because there's a lot of history that I was fortunate to be mentored by people that have been on the school board for a long time to help me understand, you know, the the history when you go into negotiations, the histories when we're going to the conference and and when we're presenting resolutions. I am someone that has been actively involved in the board, I would say, in my past six years, which is demonstrated, you know, by some of the the changes that our board was, not just me, but our board was really active in putting into place. Specifically focused on like equity issues. Some of the things I was most proud of is, you know, the support of the safe harbor legislation. That was something that I really pioneered and were able to get numerous school districts across the state of Minnesota, or Wisconsin, rather, to pass that. And so that decriminalized children that are being sexually exploited, you know, as a statewide voice saying that we want to support our kids, even our kids that are really at high risk. I sent out a lot of information because my career has been very focused on serving kids and families. Specifically, kids that have been exposed to traumatic situations, child maltreatment, so learning to child development, teaching other professionals like law enforcement, like Ed, or social workers and attorneys, how to forensically interview children, which takes an understanding of children's communication, developmental understanding, what that process looks like and feels like for kids, the mental impact. And when we have expulsion hearings, that is something that I'm always really looking at, too, is like that mental health aspect, and that's something that the school district of Superior has really been focused on, and I think I really liked working with Mike Myers because he also had a similar background. You know, as a school social worker, I think that kind of approach, that mental health approach, not a punitive approach, a restorative approach, is really important in school districts to keep kids in school so that they're not having criminalized behaviors, they're not dropping out. We need to ensure that our school is safe, and mental health is a big piece of that. And that's something that I work very closely with mental health experts, national experts, on how we need to meet our kids' best needs. For even the trauma impact of COVID, I think our kids are still, you know, trying to get back to normal, and I don't think we're going to actually get to normal, and we're seeing that in academic performances. Our teachers are doing amazing, but that's taking tremendous effort. So another aspect I would say I bring is the relationship with our teachers, with our staff, anywhere from bus drivers, kitchen folks, to our teachers and administration. I was asked by many different folks that work in the district and supported by them to run for this position or run, but apply for this position. You know, they just know that I am someone that'll listen to them, and I'll go to bat. Like, it's not something that people don't know that I'm very passionate about kids, and I'm very passionate about policy and public schools. You know, I've been willing to speak at hearings. I've attended stuff that was outside, you know, but for the state, for public schools. You know, just because I'm a concerned citizen and want our kids to have the best education they can have. And for it to be a good support. Yeah, and I'd say another aspect is that, you know, it's not secret, you know, that I've had conflict with board members, but I was really happy that by the end I felt that that relationship by taking the steps to go through actually mediation was a good step. I think conflict can be healthy, but you know what? If you're not having any conflict, you're not doing the work. And so there is a healthy point that if we're going to actually get the work done, that there is going to be some tension at times. That's a good thing. I've never worked on a team, even from sports teams to professional teams with, you know, child maltreatment experts or investigators. There's going to be times where we have to have hard conversations and we're not going to agree. Me and Chris Kintop are another example, going bat to bat. Me and Len, bat to bat. It's never personal. It's really about what you care about and trying to get the work done. And with me and Brooke, it was to the point where it wasn't healthy, and I think it was important that both of us were willing to take the step to try to repair that relationship. So I think people that are willing to do that, that's someone that you need on the board.
Thank you. Thank you, Laura. This does conclude your interview. We certainly, again, appreciate your interest in this position. Again, a reminder that we will contact all applicants tonight with our final results.
Hey, best of luck to you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. A lot of fun, Mike.
Did it get warm in here with the dirt loads?
You've still got your jacket on, so.
Might be able to, this late, starting to get this late in the day, leave that open.
I think now.
Right.
Yeah.
Is that my hot seat? Mike, welcome. I am Steve Olson, school board president. As you know, today, we are interviewing for Superior School District's vacancy. Thank you for your interest in filling the vacancy. There have been six questions selected, and every school member will ask one question. Interview will be limited to fifteen minutes, which gives you approximately two minutes per question. You will need to manage your answers to ensure you have enough time to get through all six questions. Superintendent Starzacki will be keeping the time. She will signal with a yellow piece of paper with thirty seconds left and a red one when your time is up. Your time will start after the first question is read. We will send out an email to all applicants tonight with the final board decision. We wish you the best of luck.
Hey.
Describe your understanding of your role as a school board member and the administration's role in the district.
That's a good question. So I, how I see the school board, we are kind of the, you know, the overseers of all that happens outside, community members that, you know, listen to what the community has to say about about the schools and take their input and try to do the best we can to provide the the highest quality educational opportunities for every fellow in our in our community.
Hey, Mike.
Good.
Long time.
Yeah.
Good to see you. What strengths do you possess to make you an effective candidate?
I would say, first thing, experience. So I did serve on the board for a term ending in two thousand eighteen, especially for a role in this capacity where we're, you know, filling a spot for a limited amount of time. Having someone with experience, I think, is an asset. I think you all know, being board members, there is a learning curve coming in, so, you know, I think I would kind of bring some of that experience to help bridge that gap. Also, just working in education in different capacities for, I don't know, over a decade. Also, just, you know, with being on the school board and other work, you know, I've always just had an ear out for listening to our educators. I think that's the most important role we can do, and our and our families, obviously, but I think bringing that where the folks that are doing it every day know the best. And I think that's a, that's something that I that I understand and I I respect, and I I think I would bring that to the table to to with that experience.
Thanks, Mike. That water's yours if you want it.
Oh, I'm good. Thank you.
Hi, Mike.
Thank you.
Describe your responsibilities as a school board member if you receive an email or phone call from a parent or employee with a complaint.
Great. First off, it's it's our responsibility to listen. One thing that I think we all learn once we're in a, you know, elected official or anything like that, that that's our responsibility, is to listen, to empathize, to think about what what's been brought to us, and then finding the best avenues to to, you know, either solve that situation or resolve an issue. But I think it's always our our duty to to listen and then to bring that to have that conversation and really deeply think about how anything that we would do in this room is going to affect not only that family, but also the other other people involved. The district as a whole, the the folks that work in the schools, the other families that are. So I think it's our our responsibility to to really take the time to to think deeply about every everything that comes across our our desk.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mike. You were appointed as a new school board member. What are some of the first things you would do in connection with your new?
Good question. Well, first off, I would I would definitely connect with each one of you to get to know you better, actually know quite a few folks who are on the board already, but no, I think that would be the first thing, see what is already being worked on. Get up to speed with pressing issues, things that are, you know, being worked on in the district wide, things that I could I can help with. I think that would be the first first priority. Also, then, really getting out there to let folks know that I'm accessible, so attending more meetings, events, things of that nature, just so you know, community members, parents, faculty staff, they would all see me and just let them know that, you know, how I would be available. And just be visual for the district and everyone to see that I would be around and and ready to work.
All right. Hi, Mike.
Hey.
All right. Describe your understanding of the following statement. All means all, every student, every day.
Means all, every student. So if I hear that, it I think it's it's what my philosophy of public education is. It's every student, every day, regardless of where they come from, who they are, what they are. Every student deserves the same opportunity to get a quality education and to have those, you know, to have a chance to learn. I think one thing I'm really proud of our of our area is is the legacy or the, you know, the the tradition of doing this for for instance, being a student that went through school here myself and having all of my, you know, my family, my, now my my brother has two children in the district. I think that's the thing that we, that's the important thing, that the district and the board has to always make sure happens, is that every student, every day, is cared for, is respected, is acknowledged, and is shown their worth.
Thank you. Mike, this is your final question. Why are you the best candidate to fill this short-term vacancy?
I have ten minutes. Oh, then, yes. Save on this one. I just I think I believe there's a lot of good candidates on here. I I think with myself, like I said, having the experience of being on here before, also showing in other service capacities. I have been able to work with folks on different projects, different things. I I didn't mention that before, but I did serve as a county board supervisor for four years. So having that, I guess, that that experience of working in this world, I think is a is an asset that I could bring for these these next few months. Also, I I think if you just look at my history, education and especially public education is something that I fought for 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 over fifteen years. In this capacity, as being a board member, as being an advocate, as being a protester at times. To me, it's always been the thing that I understood why I've got, you know, the the opportunities and the the things in my life came from having the opportunity to go to good schools with great educators. I want that to happen and continue to happen in Superior and in, like, as as Len put it, to for every student, every day. And I think I bring that that lens. I I think I'd bring that that passion to to really look at things deeply when necessary and to to ask hard questions and to, at the same time, be be willing to work collaboratively with with others on the board and in the district. Yeah, I think that is why I would be a an okay candidate.
Thank you, Michael. This does conclude your interview, and we appreciate your interest in this school board.
Yep, you all very much.
Good day.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Mike. Going to tease you.
You've been warming up on the woods up there. Are you alone? Are you alone?
Yeah.
Do the money for me.
No landline? Cancel the land? I haven't done that yet.
And there's still our very same. We have a seat over here for you.
Okay.
All the way across the room.
Before I start, I I put together a note book of a few things. If you want to pass it around, then you can hang on to it after I leave. And just as long as I get it back.
Sure. Thank you. We'll get that back to Ann.
Sure.
Right there, yep.
Well, that's the one with the electronic.
Okay. You're hanging. Good to see you.
Hi.
Welcome. I am Steve Olson, the school board president. As you know, today, we are interviewing for the Superior School District's school board vacancy. Thank you for your interest in the vacancy. There have been six questions selected, and every school board member will ask one question. This interview will be limited to fifteen minutes, which gives you approximately two minutes per question. You need to manage your answers to ensure you have enough time to get through all six questions. Superintendent Starzacki will be keeping time. She will show you a yellow card when there's thirty seconds left and a red card, of course, when your time is up.
Okay.
You have a buzzer? Your time will start after the first question is read.
Okay.
I'm Diana.
Hi.
Describe your understanding of your role as a school board member and administration's role in the district.
Oh, boy. Well, of course, the school board is responsible for just about everything, I guess. But setting policy is the main, main thing. And I get budget, of course, is important also. I always felt that a school is, is, is as good as its staff. And I don't know if you have any role in selecting staff, well, you probably do at least for the superintendent. But is that enough? And, and, you know, policy is the main thing. I mean, there are certain things that we're going to cut before the board in which there has to be a decision. And the board cannot do anything except when they're meeting as a board. Sometimes board members think that they can do things outside that parameter, but they can't.
Hello, I'm Nick. Good to meet you.
Hi.
Hanning, what strengths do you possess to make an effective candidate?
Well, I certainly have a, a load of experience with, with education, public education. I think public education is, is very important. And I'm a little concerned about what's been happening to public education around the country. And I think it's been somewhat under attack and I'm hoping that it doesn't happen here. I'm, I can give you two war stories about meetings that I've been to. My first principalship, I was required to be at all the board meetings. Some, they would usually start about 8:00 PM and often went to 2:00 or 3:00 AM. And I had to be at school the next day. If you want to hear some more stories about that one, I could go on. I had 10 years' experience in three. I've been around boards. I used to be a negotiator for the teachers' union. And the dead board didn't like me. The others did.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hi, Tom. Describe your responsibilities as a school board member if you receive an email or phone call from a parent or employee with a complaint.
I would listen, but as I said before, as a board member cannot do anything except when they're sitting as a board. So you bring it to the board for the next meeting or put it on the agenda. I don't know if it's, if it's correct to talk to other board members and, and say that I received this complaint or whatever, whatever it was or concern. But listen. Don't comment. Don't make them think you're taking sides. There's always at least two sides and sometimes more. Great problem.
Uh, good evening, Tom.
Hi.
If you are appointed as the new school board member, what are some of the first things you would do in connection with your new role?
Well, I'd get to know the, the other board members for one thing, get familiar with how things are run. Every board is a little bit different in how they operate. I would probably stay silent for a while until I get the feel of how things go and how I can have any effect on anything. I've, I've done that same type of thing with several other things that I've been on, other boards, committees, so on. Just stay silent for a little while. Don't, don't try to change things right away. If they don't even, if they don't even need changing, of course, that would be another thing, but yeah. And if they do need changing, don't try to jump in too fast.
Hi, Tom.
Hi.
All right. If you could describe your understanding of the following statement. All means all, every student, every day.
I like it. It's, it's something to be sought, strived for. I used to have a personal model. We, we build students one at a time and every day. And I've always thought that teachers are everyday heroes. And yeah, every, I don't know, it kind of says it all. I think, I, I think with my, my application, you saw what I had is as far as the, basically it's about kids and learning. There are seven of those. I had those on my bulletin board, looking at it every day. I handed them out to the staff a couple of times a year, just so nobody forgets what we're all about. I wouldn't put up with staff members that were complaining about kids because kids were the reason we were there.
Thank you.
Sure.
Um, your final question, why are you the best candidate to fill this short-term vacancy?
I don't know if I am. I don't know the other ones. That's your job.
Hey.
Okay. Again, if you go back to my resume, I've got a ton of experience, been around a long time. I even forgot some things in there. I was also on the State Superintendent's Committee for Teacher Certification and Education, teacher education. I was chair of that committee for a while. I didn't like that committee because it kept coming up with more things for college students to do, to be certified. And I thought they already had enough on their plate. And when I tried to remove some, I got shot down. I've been around education for a long time. I think public education is one of the foundations of our whole, whole nation. And we, we can't, we can't let it go. We have to keep it. If you look at what this country has accomplished in the past, I'm, I'm, I'm a big leader of, of World War II, then to Normandy. And the things that we accomplished in World War II had a lot to do with how we ran our education system. Because when somebody went down, let's say an officer went down, there was always somebody there ready to pick it up. And that didn't happen on the other side. And I think public education had a lot to do with that. I, and as I said before, I'm a little bit concerned about what I've been reading about what's happening in other places with school boards and, and in schools. And I don't think we want that to happen here.
Thank you, Tom. We really appreciate you being here today. We will send out an email to see who to last case with our final policy.
Okay.
Goodness.
Good job.
Thank you.
Almost a pleasure.
So here's my note. Do you think you can just say it a lot?
I just totally missed that.
What's that?
Did you read that?
Yeah, my flip notes.
That's, yeah, that's your bridge.
Yeah.
He was on with us.
Like diocese, maybe, you know him.
He's Tennessee boy.
Dick Lloyd's client.
Yeah, started going to law for 40.
He's a good 50 years, yeah.
I wish I had. Could you?
Me too. If I'd like this.
Right. He's generally serves fast all the time. Hi. We call the hot seat.
Yeah.
Hi, Nick Arias.
Good, how are you?
Welcome.
Thank you.
I'm Steve Olson, the school board president. As you know, today we are interviewing for the school district school board vacancy. Thank you for your interest in filling the vacant seat. There are six questions selected and every school board member will ask one question. Interview will be limited to 15 minutes, which gives you approximately two minutes per question. You will need to manage your answers to ensure you have enough time to get through all six questions. Superintendent Starzecchi will be our timekeeper. With 30 seconds, you will see a yellow card and a red card when your time is completed. Your time will start after the first question is read. We will send out an email tonight to all applicants with the final board decision and we wish you good luck.
Thank you.
Hi, Nick.
Hi.
Um, your first question is to describe your understanding of your role as a school member and the administration's role in the district.
So as a school board member and part of the board, I feel like strategy is the big goal for the board, whether it's financial and setting a budget, abiding by all the laws. I find that similar to my role in my business as an owner, setting the strategy and so that the people within the business can follow that. And that's what I see as the administration's role is carrying out day-to-day operations, seeing that the strategy that has been put forth is met and then being accountable for that.
Nick, good to see you. What strengths do you possess to make you an effective candidate?
Um, I feel like I've had a lot of life lessons and my experience as a business owner, just dealing with day-to-day business operations with many different people in that business. And, you know, inevitably issues come up and having to figure out solutions to problems and listen to people, I think that translates well into being a school board member. Getting complaints, getting issues raised to me personally or as a board, being able to listen and understand, have empathy and compassion for those that are bringing the issues forward and then figuring out a way to come up with a solution so that everybody is happy. And if not happy, they understand why the decision was made.
Thank you.
Hi. Describe your responsibilities as a school board member if you receive an email or phone call from a parent or employee with a complaint.
So I think my responsibility would be to listen. Make sure I understand exactly all the circumstances around the complaint, the people involved, various things that I need to understand so that I can relay to the person, whoever it is, that I understand what they're, what they're saying, what their complaints are, relaying that back to them so that we're on the same page and taking that issue wherever it needs to go, whether it's the board or it's the administration. And then with that person, having a follow-up plan with them so that they understand what I'm going to do with that information and how I'm going to follow up with them.
Thank you.
Good evening, Nick. You are appointed as the new school board member. What are some of the first things you would do in connection with your new role?
A lot of the first things I would do is really dive into bylaws and getting to know each and each one of you. I've already planned on and committed to running for school board in the spring. So I think this would be a big help in just getting my feet wet as far as understanding the ins and outs of the board, learning the bylaws, learning procedures and policies. I think that's a big part of, you know, following the rules and making sure you're doing things properly and in the right way.
Thank you.
Nick. Describe your understanding of the following statement. All means all, every student, every day. Uh, my understanding of that is every student is important. Every student has a voice. Every student has feelings and families that they care about. So making sure us as a school board, as the administration staff, whoever's involved, making sure they, they know that that student needs to be cared for at the school and so that they can go home at the end of the day. But just really having compassion for all the students, however, wherever they come from, different walks of life, and just making sure that that student knows that they're cared about.
Thanks.
This is your final question already. Nick, why are you the best candidate to fill this vacant position?
I feel like I have a lot of experience in my role as the business owner, in my role on other boards. I've been on several boards within the building industry. My different life experiences, when I take on a challenge, I do it with 110%. I'm all in. So I feel like I would give all that I can to being on this board. I've been in my business for almost 20 years and I started at the bottom and worked my way up. So I have a, an ability to manage relationships, manage people older than me, younger than me. I can communicate with them. And so all of these various things help me with dealing with conflict resolution and, you know, whatever it is that may come up. I think I've, I've dealt with it in some way, shape or form.
Anything else?
I appreciate the opportunity. Like I said, I was here in the spring, although virtually, so I didn't see you in person. And again, I'm running, I'm running in the spring, so that this can be just a springboard for that.
This does conclude your interview. We appreciate again for your time. We will be sending out this email this evening for notification.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Represent him too.
Then they'll be drinking.
Um, it says blue slush, uh, energy drink.
Stuff or whatever.
It's delicious. Terrible, not corroding.
Even it, I just wanted to.
It's gluten-free, sugar-free.
Good morning, sir.
You know, Nick.
That's the third person who said that two seasons ago.
Hi.
Shelly, and welcome.
Thank you.
I am Steve Olson, school board president. And you know, today we are interviewing for the school district's vacancy. Thank you for your interest in filling the vacant seat. There are six questions selected and every school board member will ask a question. Interview will be limited to 15 minutes, which, which gives you approximately two minutes per question. You will need to manage your answers to ensure you have enough time to get through all six questions. Superintendent Starzecchi will be the timekeeper. Yellow card, 30 seconds. Red card, you'll be done with the interview. Your time will start after the first question is read. We will send out an email tonight to all applicants with the final board decision. Wish you good luck.
Thank you. First question is, describe your understanding of your role as a school board member and the administration's role in the district. Well, I think my role as a school board member would be to be familiar with budgeting, recruitment, retention. recruitment, retention, understanding policy, upholding those policies. Administration would be responsible for kind of setting what the goals and the strategic plan would be for us to then carry out.
Shelley. What strengths do you possess to make you an effective candidate?
I have worked with leadership for over twenty years. I think a lot of the things that I've done in my leadership role would apply to what the school board does as well. I'm familiar with budgeting, I'm familiar with hiring, dealing with conflict, project management. We just went through, I work for Sentja, so we just moved into a big brand new building. I was a part of that project from the beginning to the end for moving our laboratory. That's the biggest project of my career and something I'm quite proud of as well. We were able to move all of our equipment, all of our staff over a ten-day phase and maintain testing in both locations and not impact any of our patients in a negative way. So that was quite exciting. And the plan that I put together, our moving company said they're going to use for future moves. So I was quite proud of that as well.
Oh, hi, sorry. Describe your responsibilities as a school board member if you receive an email or phone call from a parent or employee with a complaint.
So I think my responsibility would be to get back to them. It's important to hear what they have to say. I will try to address it myself. If I'm not familiar with the complaint, I would bring it back to the board and discuss it with them to get insight from others in case it's something that I don't want to misdirect anyone, so I want to be able to get the right answer or to direct that individual in the right place. I'm not afraid to admit, if I don't know something, I will ask for help.
Good evening, Shelley, welcome back again. If you are appointed as the new school board member, what are some of the first things you would do in connection with your new role?
Build relationships. I need to get to know all of you, get to know what is happening, more familiar with what's happening in the school district. I did read some of the minutes and see what's going on from that aspect. I've looked at the website to kind of see what's going on. But I think that relationship building is important. Hearing from the students. I have two children of my own. My daughter just graduated in June from the high school, so she is off to college and doing quite well. My son is a junior in high school, so he is still in the school. And I hear feedback from him too and from his classmates. So just understanding how I can then bring that to this group and how we can do something better to serve our students.
All right. Next question, describe your understanding of the following statement. All means all, every student, every day.
Oh, I saw that when I was doing my research. All means all is inclusivity, diversity, equity. We do a lot of training at my employer as well around that. And I think it means including everybody, finding a way to have every person have a positive experience. And that's not an easy task.
Tell your final question, why are you our best candidate to fill this short-term vacancy?
I think my passion for wanting to serve the community is fun. I want to see our students succeed. I currently sit on a couple of boards. I'm a part of the Lake Superior College MLT Philotomy and MLA Advisory Board. And as a part of that board, we are establishing curriculum and giving feedback on competencies and just how well those students are coming prepared to be workers within the laboratory. I'm also a part of the Memorial Blood Center Advisory Board. So I'll put a plug in for blood donations. We need blood donors, so please do that, there's a blood shortage right now. And then I also participate in the Douglas County Beef Association as the treasurer. And we have youth from third grade to high school that participate in that. And that association, I feel, teaches a lot of life lessons. We're teaching the kids not only how to care for animals, but we're also teaching them some business skills and just life skills in general. And I find that rewarding. It's fun to work with the kids and get them on a path and find where their strengths are and see them then succeed and feel good about themselves. So those are just the reasons why I think I would benefit more.
Thank you. This does conclude the interview. Again, we appreciate your interest in this position. We will be making contacts this evening to all members.
Great.
Thank you.
Well, for your time.
Thank you. What's your, what's your wish when we're done? We have two more to go. Do you want to take a short break? Come back if you want to follow this through.
Are they here?
Pardon?
Oh, they are here.
He means after we're done.
Oh, we're voting.
Brooke, I need a break.
I'm good with whatever.
Said Brooke, never.
Turning a new leaf, Nick.
Factor.
Use a bathroom. Yeah, that's what else, that'd be great.
I feel like I'm back in school.
Oh.
That's what I said anyways, it's fine.
Marky, welcome. I'm Steve Olson, the school board president. As you know, today we are interviewing for the Superior School District's school board vacancy. Thank you for your interest in filling the vacancy. There are six questions selected and every school board member will ask one question. This interview will be limited to fifteen minutes, which gives you an approximate two minutes for each question. You'll need to manage your answers to ensure you have enough time to get through all six questions. Superintendent Starzecchi will be our timekeeper. With thirty seconds left, you will see a yellow card and then a red card, it means your interview time is over. Your time will start once the first question is read. We will send out an email tonight to all applicants with the final board decision. Wish you good luck.
Thank you.
Your first question is, describe your understanding of your role as a school board member and the administration's role in the district.
Sure, so my understanding of the school board is really to make sure that, you know, the best decisions are being made for the student body as a whole, making sure that issues are addressed in a timely fashion, making sure that finances are handled, you know, working with the actual district staff that is here that knows the ins and outs of, you know, say the financials or transportation or what have you. And just really kind of being that oversight, much like in an organization where you have kind of that next level of security to make sure that, you know, our community students are safe, they're getting the best education that they can and we're doing the best we can for them.
Marky. What strengths do you possess to make you an effective candidate?
So I feel like I've had a lot of experience working in a corporate setting, which I feel like is sort of similar with a school board. You know, I'm very comfortable speaking in front of a group. I'm very invested in the success of, you know, any organization that I'm involved in. And I just think I have a lot of skills that I can offer. I'm a CPA, so I have a financial background. I have a lot of experience with, well, anything number-related, but also organization-related. I worked for Goodwill for a while and worked on their board as their controller and, you know, offered my insights on improvements there. And I'm a mom. You know, I know what my kids need and I feel like that's a good indicator of, you know, what our community's students need. And, you know, I feel like that's a big part of the school board is having that understanding of students in general. I'm really involved with athletics from baseball, softball, basketball, gymnastics. I know a lot of families and a lot of students. And so I feel like that gives me a good understanding of, you know, what people are looking for, maybe problems they're having, what they aren't bringing up. You know, just some additional insight.
You.
All right, hello. Describe your responsibilities as a school board member if you receive an email or phone call from a parent or employee with a complaint.
So the biggest thing for me is always communication. My biggest pet peeve is if you don't answer my email or you don't answer my call, I'm going to be upset. And so that's going to be my biggest priority is even if I don't know the answer, I don't know the solution, it's going to be getting back to that individual and saying, hey, I got you, I heard, I'm trying to figure out what my next steps are or I need some more information, I need some help understanding what the situation is. You know, that is so key because people just want to be heard. And even if you can't give them the solution that they need or that they particularly want, at least having that personal outreach and contact. And I realize, you know, I don't even know, you know, yet how, you know, how many emails you guys get. But for me, that's just very important. It's the same thing if I walk into a store and I'm looking around at something, not having somebody that works there come up to me and say, hey, can I help you, what's going on? You know, so that's very important to me is making sure that people feel like they're heard and seen.
Good evening, Marky. You're appointed as the new school board member. What are some of the first things you would do in connection with your new role?
You know, what I would really like to figure out, and I don't know the answer to this, but I would like to figure out how to open things up for those parents that have a lot of complaints that are maybe posting on social media or something like that, but they're not here. So how do we get to those parents and we say to them like, hey, what's going on? What are you upset about? What, you know, is it a town hall with just individual board members just to kind of voice some concerns? Is it, you know, open houses of some sort? That's what I'd really like to get to because I feel like especially with a lot that's been going on, there's all these parents that have these things and they're attacking and they're, you know, there's these pages being made, but they're not coming here, they're not sending emails, they're not bringing it forward. And I don't know why. I don't know if, you know, I know a lot of people don't like to do that kind of stuff. They don't like to speak out and so they feel more comfortable on the internet. But I think it's really important for, you know, the board to hear those individuals so that they, again, feel heard and they're acting like they're not being heard. But I also don't think that they're actually reaching out to be heard in the appropriate fashion. So that would be a big thing for me to really kind of figure out what that looks like and how that could maybe be, you know, helped. Another big thing for me is financial education. Like I said, I'm a CPA, finance is a big thing for me. My concern with kids these days, if you will, is leaving the house and knowing how to balance your checkbook, knowing what a credit card means and how to finance things, making sure you're saving for retirement. I mean, things are just getting more and more expensive and I feel like our students need to be prepared for that and need to understand that even just putting a little bit away is going to make a huge difference. So I think there's a lot of things that kids learn in school and I'm not saying, you know, one thing is more important than another. But I feel like this is a piece that could really be hit on some more and could be really beneficial for the students in our community.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Hey, Marky. If you could describe your understanding of the following statement. All means all, every student, every day.
Yeah, so that's a statement that I've read before and I've spoke before this board kind of saying that statement as well. And I think for me, it's really, again, that listening, being heard, making sure that you are hearing the majority of the all and not making assumptions about particular, you know, sections of community or, you know, anything like that. It's really getting a comfortable feeling that the decision being made is really going to be, you know, for the benefit of the group and not just singling out a particular group. And I realize that especially these days, that is extremely difficult. So I'm not saying it's easy in any fashion. But to me, when I hear that statement and when I think about having to make a decision for all means all, I'm really going to try to understand, do I know a parent that's maybe in a minority group? Or do I know a parent that's maybe struggling with bullying or something like that? Like who can I reach out to? I'm very big with connections and trying to figure out who do I know? Or who do I know that knows somebody who is struggling with this or has a strong opinion about this or whatever? To really get a good understanding. And again, getting that feeling of have I heard the parents? Have I heard what's being said, you know, online or what have you?
Marky, this is your last question. Why are you the best candidate to fill this short-term vacancy?
So, okay, so I don't have to talk really fast. So in my letter that I wrote to you, I said, you know, I feel like I am a strong and steady voice for this community. I'm a parent, I have a personal invested interest in this community. I have two kids, one that's in fifth grade, one's that's in second grade. I'm going to be in this district for a long time. And again, my involvement with you sports, I not only have my kids, but I have those kids because I'm also the wife of a coach and he coaches pretty much everything. And I'm super involved and I'm super invested in these kids and these families. And so I feel like that gives me that extra connection to, you know, more parents within the district to get a a better grasp on what's needed. And I think for me personally, you know, being a part of this, albeit small in comparison to the teachers and staff that are actually working with the kids, but, you know, just being able to make that positive impact, helping our kids become, you know, good humans and being able to contribute to our community or the communities that they move on to.
Thank you, Marky. This does conclude your interview. We appreciate again your interest in this position and we will be making contact by emails this evening on the candidate who was chosen and the others that were not.
All right, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
You too. Try to stay dry out there.
Amy, you're doing a solid job.
All right, that's that yellow card and red card.
We just die.
I thought you really.
That's why I like to say something.
I didn't understand it the first with Laura here first. I was like, that's got to be longer than two minutes, that last question. And I realized, oh yeah, she's getting the eight.
Yeah.
So I'd rate a flagging, you're like, I'm doing your job.
No, it's not her question, it's just an effort.
But I did, I did my research, I figured it out.
Yes, sorry, I was not seeing, so it's distracted.
We're going to get red, but we figured it.
I'm like a spotlight.
Hi, Sarah, and welcome. I'm Steve Olson, school board president. As you know, today we are interviewing for the Superior School District's school board vacancy. Thank you for your interest in filling the vacancy. There are six questions selected and every school board member will ask one question. This interview will be limited to fifteen minutes, which gives you approximately two minutes per question. You will need to manage your answers to ensure you have enough time to get through all six questions. Superintendent Starzecchi will be in charge at the time. She will hold up a yellow card with thirty seconds and a red card when your time is done, kind of like Vanna. Your time will start after the first question is read. We will send out an email this evening to all applicants with the final board decision and we wish you good luck.
Sarah. Your first question, describe your understanding of your role as a school board member and the administration's role in the district.
So school board members are supposed to be a voice for all students, staff, community members, parents, grandparents, guardians, everyone that's involved with a student. They are there to be supportive, make smart decisions, both financial and safety-wise for the students. As for the administration, As for the administration, they're the ones that carry out all the policies that the school board creates and makes and votes on. Sometimes they don't mesh too well. Sometimes there's a disconnect just because, you know, you guys aren't in the school every day, so you don't exactly know what's going on in the buildings. Um, so I think that's where the disconnect can kind of come with, with parents and frustrations.
Sarah, what strengths do you possess to make you an effective candidate?
Can you repeat the question?
What strengths do you possess to make you an effective candidate?
I think that I am a strong leader. I work well with others. I bring new ideas to the table. And when I have a good idea, I run with it and I reach out to people that might not necessarily be your go-to people for support and, um, you know, backing you up. I reach out to everybody and see who best fits the job, um, for support and volunteering, things like that. I try to talk to people that I don't normally talk to, meet new faces, meet new people, next faces with names, kids with parents, things like that, just so I know who people are. So everybody has a familiar face and feels comfortable in what they're doing.
Thank you.
All right. Hello. Describe your responsibilities as a school board member if you receive an email or phone call from a parent or employee with a complaint.
So since I've never been on the school board, I guess I don't really know what the, what the procedure is. Um, I would, I would need to read up on that, but I would assume that you bring it to the board. You make discussions, perhaps send it to the superintendent, just so everybody knows what's going on. And then I guess it would be discussed at a meeting. It's not something that you would handle on your own. I mean, you would obviously respond and say, thank you for the email. I appreciate your concern, but you can't make a decision or voice on behalf of the school board.
Good evening, Sarah. If you are appointed as the new school board member, what are some of the first things you would do in connection with your new role?
Oh, I think that the biggest problem right now is a disconnect with communication and parents and guardians and students and staff. Um, for example, uh, my daughter was absent one day already at the high school and it took me 10 minutes on the website just to find who the per, I knew who the person was. I needed to re, make an email to Elaine. I knew that, but I could not find her email address anywhere on the website. 10 minutes I gave up. And then I remember seeing a, uh, a newsletter from the high school, uh, engagement coordinator that's, you know, listed that information. So I had to dig through my email to find that. I think that there's a lot of parents that are frustrated because everyone just thinks that everybody just knows what the plan and procedures are. And I think we need to go back to the basics and remind people, how do I report attendance? What am I supposed to do for drop-off? Where do I go? Where do I park? What, what school supplies do I need? Do I need snacks for my kid? There's a lot of basics that people just don't know. And especially with new families and shuffling and everyone coming into the district that perhaps doesn't live here, didn't go here, there's those basic informational things that they just don't know how to find.
All right. Next, could describe your understanding of the following statement. All means all, every student, every day.
Figure that was going to come up this time. I was surprised it did not come up last time, to be honest with you. Um, I think that that is really pushed a lot and I think there's a lot of people that spout that, but don't necessarily know what it means. Um, I think that there's a lot of parents that don't feel like it includes everyone. Um, you know, there's, there's kids that are going without school supplies or going without lunch. Or there's families that are struggling and I don't think that they feel like they are welcome with open arms with that all means all. I think that all means all most of the time, but not all of the time. And I think that there's a lot of families that don't feel that that applies to them.
Sarah, your final question. Why are you the best candidate to fill this short-term vacancy?
Five minutes. Not going to pass the nine. Um, I'm, I'm really excited to have the opportunity to be here. I would love to be on the school board. I come with every passion in the world and when I want something, I go for it. I am all in, both feet, everything. I feel like I have a good voice for the school district and the fact that I have three children all at the three levels of, that our school is in. I meet everyone everywhere I go. People know who I am and that's not a tut-tut. They know who I am. I'm the lady with the weird hair, right? So they all know who I am. Um, and I don't, I don't know what it is. People just gravitate towards me if they have a question about something because they know I know the answer. Cause I'm the one that sits up at two in the morning watching the school board meeting recordings. I look at the city council meet, meeting minutes. I, I just, I really like to know what's going on in the community. And that's, that's, I'm very passionate about that. I want to be a resource for people. If they have a question or they need help or they need a resource for something or a connection to a person that they don't necessarily know, I, I like to be that person.
Okay. Thank you. This does conclude your interview. Send out an email to all applicants again tonight with our decisions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, at this time, we're going to take a five-minute break. Back at about six hundred and twenty-five after. Thank you.
I just can't believe all that.
That's supposed to be.
Yeah. Blue means it's on. Yeah, it's on.
How many did we take? Just one right now. Just one.
Just take the one. Just one.
And top four, you can put your X next.
So I'd like to, uh, reconvene this meeting.
Is that okay?
This would be an opportunity, hang on now, before you vote. This would be an opportunity for you to have any type of discussion of what you heard. I did write some notes down. When I looked at it, experience, knowledge, understanding of the exact rule the school board makes, governance and policy over micromanagement. I was looking for a cooperative attitude. I was looking for someone that wanted to be part of our team, that wanted to know us, to know us, wanted to know how we function, what our purpose is here for the children of our district. They were all required to submit a letter of interest. And part of that letter of interest was the biography and, and, uh, as you've read, biographies are very thorough. Again, in that letter, we talked about experience and qualifications to serve as a school board member. We talked about why the candidate is interested in the position, what the candidate hopes to accomplish as a school board member. And you saw that some of the same questions, that some of the same, um, messages are questioning part of what, of both parts here, the questions and then the interview. So as you, as you move forward, are you looking at any particular thing? What you've heard as, as you make your ballot, your ballot, your first ballot, what you're going to do is you're going to select four out of the seven. We originally had nine, but well, that one dropped and then unfortunately today, one of our other candidates had to drop. So we will select our top four choices. Uh, when that is done, then Mr. Albrecht and I will count. As that superintendent Strazeki oversees the count. Once we get to that point, the top two vote-getters, top two names that are showing the most, will move on to the second ballot. And then there will be a third ballot that will go from the two people down to your number one choice. So questions about procedure or any other comments that anybody would like to make?
If we happen to have a tie again for more people, are we just going to take that, like what we did last time or?
Yes.
Think we took top three last time instead of top two?
Yes. With the top. Any further questions in our comments?
You just need Xs for the first.
Just need Xs for the first. And make sure, and make sure and sign them. Don't be like me last time signing my ballot. And you can cross out the last name on that ballot. You have completed your ballot. Please fold it. Yep. Pass it. If I made a move with an X around one, I might cross it out. So I don't know if you want to fill out a new one or if I have, there's good. I don't think you've got it.
Can understand it.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. Here.
Up here. All we have is a tally sheet with all the names on it, the tally, you know, the top four vote-getters.
Hi again. Sixteen.
Sixteen.
Sixteen scores.
So we would move two.
The two. And now that wasn't what we're going to do, all of those, based on what you told Brooke, right?
Yes.
So we'll put all those on the ballot and then they vote.
Right.
The top two.
So do we have a?
Yes. And then she needs to know, she needs to know who it is, so she needs to.
She needs to know, she needs to know who it is, so she needs to win.
So that'd be five because we do have a tie.
Okay.
So moving on, Tom Henning, Nick Olson, Shelley Mon, Markey Hanson, Sarah Schubert-McCon. You will now vote for your time.
Yes.
X is again. Up to Ann.
Yep.
Nick Olson, Markey Hanson. Your final ballot, be your top person.
If you come to a conclusion after this, you'll need to make a motion to, to finalize this, so you know.
And you have one more paper clip.
What?
Paper clip?
Yes.
Let's see.
Read this?
Yes.
Oh, thanks.
Thank you. I'll give you a good. I always want my block. I can reach. Yes. Two. The first one.
Yeah.
And the second one.
May also want to make a mention. That June stuff, we have opened the.
All right, so candidate with the most votes this evening, Mr. Nick Olson. So I'd entertain a motion to accept Mr. Olson as the person to fill the vacant position.
Motion accept.
Okay. And a second, accept Nick Olson as the next school board member. Discussion. First of all, reminder, you'd have to sign these, that this is public record so anybody can come in and look at each one of our individual votes.
Those are questionnaires.
Yes, it is the questionnaires, because these will have to be turned back. As well as our questions, everything will be going back to Ann at the end of this meeting. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Both, both concardates. It's time I adjourn tonight's meeting. Thank you.